Okay, so yeah, now we're gonna begin. Uh, the study session eleven for MTH two forty. Um, so yeah, today we're looking at four point one, which is just called, I think, just called multi-variable functions. Multi- variable.
Recording check?
Recording check? And my voice and you and your voice check, it's all good. Uh, but you know what? I need, I need everybody to harmonize for me to just be able to really tell. There you go, okay, yeah, I could see the harmony.
That's probably, that's probably the comment that sent him to like universities, like now you will always have to listen to me.
One thing though, if you go on his Facebook, like he has a shitload of pictures of Minecraft.
Does he really? But that's a flex, I like that. So, and then, the next thing, uh, can't spell. Multi-variable limits is the two things that are on this test. So one of these two things, I mean, this is really nothing, there's barely any content from this section, except just understanding what a multi-variable function is. And then this is kind of tricky. So, and in fact, quite a bit harder than regular limits, so yeah. So let's start with four point one, of course. My notes are in homework help, so you can take a look there, they're updated up to, but not including the all of four point three, so not all of four point three is there, but. Uh, you know, everything else is there. So, yeah, let's start with four point one. So, um, let's start here. Remember linear algebra, I mean, I'm, I always like talking about linear algebra, because I really like linear algebra. When we had a, when we had like a transformation matrix, right, if I had like, I'm just gonna do some sort of transformation, like one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. Right? And we, we called this transformation matrix, the, the, the matrix representation of T, right? And T takes in some vector. Right, T takes in some, some vector, try to remember, you know, from linear algebra, this takes in some vector. So taking in a vector in, in terms of linear algebra and multiplying by a vector, right, like one, two, three, and we got some sort of vector out of it, like five, six, seven. You know, whatever it was. Well, you can kind of think of it like this, T is a function, it's not just a transformation, it's a function. And so I'll call it here, T is this function, and it has three inputs, it's three inputs. It has an X, a Y, and a Z, and it has three outputs, right? Oops, three outputs. Also, an X, a Y, and a Z, but maybe you wanna call it something else, like this is, maybe I'll call it a, I'll call it a, I don't know, A, B, C. A, B, C, so this is kind of like, that's kind of like this vector, and that's kind of like this vector. Right? So we've already have experience with multi-variable functions, right? It's just that we called them transformations, and we learned about them in linear algebra. So, the kinds of multi-variable functions that we're gonna look at in calculus is specifically ones that turn. So this one right here is a transformation from R three to R three, right? We get something in R three, and it gets turned into something in R three. So the kinds we're gonna look at, that's what this is, is, is R N to R. That's what we're looking at in this course, at least for the beginning, I mean, we're at the end of the course, so. You know, in the next, in the next calculus course, we're gonna look at other ones, but yeah, go for it.
So like, if, uh, if this is just linear algebra, why do we, like, why are we doing any calculus, what's, what's the difference then, why is it not?
Well, they're very related, linear algebra and calculus are very related, they have a lot of things that, you know, once you get a higher level. We're gonna do vector calculus next semester, and that's going to be, as you can imagine, linear algebra.
Nightmare?
Well, I don't think it's a nightmare, but, but, uh, potentially, I mean, so you try to see, say like, what's the derivative of something like this, but then it gets more complicated about what's the derivative and. Talk about all kinds of things, but anyways, so, just to give you the idea, just to show that we've already have experience with multi-variable functions, is, I just wanted to explain that. And so we're specifically looking at from R N to R, right? So for example, it's like we're taking a two-dimensional vector, two, three, applying some transformation matrix, and getting a number out of it. Right, getting some number, I don't know, five, somehow we get five out of it. Except we don't write it like this, we write it as, I'm putting in an X and a Y, and I get a Z out. And we still don't write it like this, we write it like F of X, Y equals Z. And this is, you know, how you usually write multi-variable functions, right? But it, it's just good to, you know, connect to what you've already learned, so. In general, uh, we're going from R N, so we, we, in a sense, we take any amount, so X one, X two, dot, 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 uh, X N. So we take in any amount of inputs from one to N, and we get a single number out of it. Right? So, usually, whenever we define things in multi-variable functions, it's, it's usually not set in full generality, it's usually set in just X and Y, and then it extends probably as you'd expect to. Uh, higher dimensions, right? But this is a function of two variables, X and Y. And so, it takes, its input is something from R two, and it assigns it to something in R. So for example, you know, it takes two, three, and it'll assign it some number in R, like five, or whatever, you know, that's my example up there. So what I want you to notice is that we're taking a two-dimensional thing, and assigning it to a one-dimensional thing. So a really good graphic for this is, um, from the textbook, actually, and it's in my calculus notes as well. And let me just scroll down to it and find it. So what we're essentially doing, and so a good way to, right away, try to understand what the domain and range of a function like this would be, is something like this. Right, so this is the domain of a, of a two-variable function, two-variable function. So, we take in, this, this bubble here is just some amount of a plane, right? So whatever's inside the bubble is contained in the domain, the bubble could be the whole plane, um, or it could be just a small area. And it assigns to the number line, right, this is just the number line. And it assigns it some value Z on the number line. And that's what all the functions are gonna do, I mean, so it's either gonna come from a two-dimensional space, or a three-dimensional space, or a four-dimensional space, doesn't matter, it's gonna assign it to a single point. Right, so you could kind of think of one-variable functions as taking a one-dimensional thing, which is called, which we call the X axis, and assigning it to another one-dimensional thing, right? The Y axis, so X axis, the Y axis. This is kind of like what it was doing before with a single variable function. And now a two-variable function goes from a higher dimensional input to a same one-dimensional output. So, there's a little bit of just, kind of, trying to understand what's going on here with what we're doing when we talk about multi-variable functions. We're assigning a higher dimensional space to a single dimensional space. So, let's do some like examples, right? So like, you write a, you write a multi-variable function, of course, just the same as you would write a function, I mean, you assign it with these input variables. Right, so let's say, for example, the one in my notes here is the square root of nine minus X squared minus Y squared. Right, so let's look at this example. So this is the function we're talking about, it, it'd be good if we knew the domain and range of this thing, right? What values of X and Y, what values in R two, so it's, it's going from R, R two to R. So what values in R two can I put into this, can I put any values into this? Can I only put some values? So if I were to start with another example first quickly, X, Y equals X squared plus Y squared, right? Then we wouldn't be able to, I mean, there is no restriction on this, right? I can plug, there's nothing that I can't do, I can, I can square any number and add it to any other number squared, there's no way that that won't work, so the, the, um. The domain of this function is the whole two-dimensional plane. This one's a little bit more complicated, right? So, uh, well, there's a, there's a restriction here, like this thing under the square root, it can't be less than zero. Right, it has to be greater than or equal to zero, so that's gonna be our domain, that this thing. Minus Y squared is greater than or equal to zero. Right? And this is the domain, that's it, that is the domain, there is a nicer way to write it, but that is it, right? That's, that's, so any two points that satisfy this is part of the domain of the function. Okay? So, I can rewrite this a little bit, though, as nine is, uh, so X squared minus Y squared, or X squared plus Y squared. Is less than or equal to nine. And, that has a graph, right? It's a set, it's a set, or there's a set of points that define, that are defined by that, and as you can see kind of by the corner of the screen there, it looks like this. Right, so it's a circle with a radius three, centered at zero, any point within this, you know, within this, um, circle is in the domain. So it's kind of like our squiggle up here, right? So our, our domain is, is a subsection of R two, right? And, so since we're taking just a subsection, we just have this, you know, part in here, so if I were to plug in, you know, three, uh, three, three, three negative three, or three, three, whatever. Uh, you would not be able to get an answer from this, you'd get a negative thing in the square root. So, yeah. Okay, and then the range is another whole separate thing, the range of a, um, two-dimensional function is, is as you'd expect, right? It's, it's all the numbers that you can get out of it, all the numbers that Z can be, right? Because we generally say this is equal to Z is our output variable, or maybe a little bit better, we say F of X, Y equals Z. And, so we're gonna get to like graphing this actual function, so what we graphed here, that's not, that's not the function, that's just the domain of the function, but it's, it's, it's already a two-dimensional thing. Um, but, so the range is all the output variables, right? Range. So, well, okay, what possible outputs from this function can we get, right? Well, the maximum possible output we can get, since this is subtracting, this is subtracting, the maximum output we could get, and it's also being squared, so we know that this is absolute value, this is, this is positive. Um, is nine, right? Is the square root of nine, I should say, square, so the maximum thing we can have in here is nine, because no matter what we're subtracting. So the upper bound on the range looks like it's going to be three, and including three, right? Because if I were to say X, so if I were to input the point zero, zero into this, I'd get a height of nine, or square, square root of nine, so three. Um, and anything other than zero, zero, I would get something smaller. And it looks like the lowest I could possibly get, well, this has to be greater than zero, so the square root of zero is zero, so it looks like, and I could get zero out of it, so it looks like that's gonna be the range. It could be a smaller section than this. Um, but, um, this is essentially, you can call this the range.
Wait, so I need to see if I get this straight. So, the reason why the range is from zero to three, is because if you have a combination of X squared and Y squared that's bigger than nine, that gives you a negative number. So it has to be at most not three.
Yeah.
Don't hold you three, like, what was squared of nine?
Yeah.
And then the lowest is zero, because you're gonna have three from all of them and zero for the other, and it's.
Yeah.
Uh, so in some sense, like, when you're thinking, when you're taking the range, or taking it kind of as a one thing, like you don't think of it like separately, but when you're taking the domain, it's like separate.
How separate, what is sep, what do you mean separate?
It's a separating, like, separate in a sense, like you look at X, you look at Y, and like how they combine to like do the domain, but when you look at the range, you just look like. What could this square root function be at most, or like?
Yeah, well, so, the reason is, is because this is a set in R two, right? This is, this is a two-dimensional set, right, it has, it has a plane like this, but the range is still one-dimensional, our output is still one number. So it's all, it's, it's not gonna be this inequality, I mean, it could be, but it's, you know, right, in this particular case, it wasn't an inequality, it was just a range like this, we just put an interval. Because it, it is an interval, it's an interval on the real number line, right? You can't really have an interval on, in R two, you have to define some sort of space, because an interval, you know, on a, on a real number line is like from some number to some number. But here, it's, it's a space, you know, it's a, it's a region that we, you know, have here.
Does the area have to do anything with the, the main and the range, or the area is just like?
Be like the, the area of the circle?
Yeah, does that mean anything or no?
Not as far as I know, but possibly, that's a good question, I, I wanna know that, if, if it's anything, if it means anything there. Um, the area of the circle would be, I don't really know. I don't know, yeah, I, quite possibly means something, yeah, I just don't know, I just don't know what use it would be, but you could, you could do that, you could find the area. Um, so that's the domain and range, any questions about how I found the domain and range?
Not exactly what the domain and range, but, yeah, so since we can't like, um, graph, uh, what's it called, uh, multi-variable function on decimals. So is it, is it, like, we have, like, that circle there represents, any point there represents two numbers, one X coordinate, one Y coordinate, which is your two.
Two inputs, yeah.
And then, that, would that output, like, if we're talking about this, uh, function specifically, would that output something in, uh, in the Z direction if we, uh, plot it in a three D graph?
I haven't gotten to that yet, but yeah, that, that's exactly right, it's essentially that we're saying, it's essentially that we're saying, like, look at this graph, okay, all of these are input points, how do we describe an output, right? I could, I could just throw a number line here, and just show some outputs that are on here, right? Because it's a one-dimensional output, so I could show like, maybe I put a, the, the, you know, a red dot here, oops, put a red dot here, you know, just define where zero is, and then I show that the red dot ends up here on the number line. Right? But, and I could do that for every point, you know, I could say, okay, this one ends up here, and this one, this one ends up here, but that's not really, you know, it doesn't make a shape. So what we, you know, what we usually do is, yeah, we take this Z axis, stick it right here at the origin, coming out towards you, right? Coming out towards you like this, so that's our physics symbol for coming out towards you. Um, and, it describes like the height of the graph, right? So if we have, and that's called, you know, the Z axis, which is why we have, uh, F of X is equal to the Z axis. And, so, yeah, whatever the output of the function is for this point, however high above the graph that is, like, that, that value, go that, that much up from the graph and put a point there. Right? Do that for every point, and you'll eventually get a graph like this, here, let me, let me just do it quickly. Uh, I can't spell, GeoGebra. GeoGebra.
Wait, is your calculator online that graphs three?
Yeah, GeoGebra, it's called GeoGebra.
Oh, you used that one, I found a different one.
What did you, what do you use?
It's called, I'll just get, like, it's called CalcPlot three D, it lets you, it lets you graph, um, like, three dimensional stuff, which I guess, I mean, there's probably more than just those two as well, but.
Yeah, probably, but.
That's much a three D feature, like, like, please, Desmos.
Uh, here, let me post this.
Well, I saw this one before, yeah.
Desmos does, if you Google Desmos three D, it, it like sends you to a link which has all the options selected, and then you can do it like that.
Yeah, yeah. I've heard of that, but yeah, thank you for the advice, Ed.
Also, this is all in the positive direction, which we expected as well.
Right, exactly, exactly, there's not, so, let's, let's like analyze this a little bit here, you're right. So, first of all, we said that the output of the function has a maximum of, from zero to three, so, does it go below, does it go negative? No, it doesn't go negative, right, there's no negative outputs on the Z axis, and yeah, look, the maximum is three, the maximum height of the graph, maximum on the Z axis, which is our output axis, is three, so our range was correct. Okay? Um, so now, let's think of our domain, right? So we said the domain was a, uh, circle of radius three centered at the origin, yeah, look at that, you can see, it's kind of hard to see, but on the, you know, X and Y axis, you can see like that, right? It goes out, so looking down like this, we have the same graph like this, we're looking at the X and Y axis. You know, we're looking at the Cartesian plane of, you know, just two-dimensional plane there, right? But when I come into three D, that's where we're putting our Z axis, and it's coming up. So like I said here, right, if I were to put a point, if I were to put, choose, just choose the point like, um, um, neg, uh, one, negative one, zero. So do you see that point there, it's kind of a little bit hidden, but you see it there, right? One, negative one, zero, and then if I choose to put the point F of one, negative one. Oh, does it not, oh, I guess I have to say, um, oh, no, no, this is what I have to do.
You wrote A, you wrote A of X and Y, X and Y.
Where did I write, oh, yeah, you're right, so, A of that, and it's gonna be one, negative one. There. So you see, that point B right there is directly above this point, this point here, I guess I, I called it A, it doesn't really label it A, it's a little bit hard to see, but. Um, so, that point there is our input, and our output is the height of this, which is about two point sixty-five, two point, so it's about two point sixty-five units above the graph, and notice it's on the surface of the graph. It's on the surface of the graph. And that's because the square, the square root of nine minus one squared minus one squared is about two point fifty, or the square root of, um, seven, is about two point sixty-five, not fifty-six, sixty-five. And so that's the height of the graph, two point sixty-five, because the height of the graph in three dimensions is our output variable. Right? So again, domain is the circle, range is the height on the Z axis here. And, you know, any one point here is, you take the input, which is from the plane that we're looking at down like that, that's the input plane, and its output is gonna come out from that, go up. Okay, any questions?
So that's, it's a, it's just a weird observation, oh. No, you go, where you going then?
That's saying it's so weird observation, because like, at first it looks kind of like diagonal, but then when you really think about it, it's, it's a straight line for each point that's there. Because like, it's a, you plug it into the X and the A function, and then you get a Z component for it, and it's just like.
Yeah.
I don't know why, you, you think it's a diagonal line, like from here, it looks very tricky.
Like from A to B, from A to B, or, yeah, yeah, i- i- if I go, if I go straight down, you can see they, they line up perfectly.
Yeah, yeah.
It's maybe just the, the perspective that they.
It's just a three D.
Yeah, exactly.
That's all.
But yeah, yeah, that's right, that's good.
Wait, so like, if you were to take the derivative of this, what would they give you, would they give you like the rate of change on the sphere?
Okay, so, yeah, you're, you're asking a very good question, that's four point three, and I'm definitely gonna talk a lot about, uh, partial derivatives when we get to four point three. But, so, okay, before we, yeah, I can mention that quickly, if I have just like a graph, a normal, you know, uh, R, R to R graph, what a one-dimensional, um, function. Right, when I say the derivative, I'm asking, how sensitive, how sensitive is the height of the graph? Right, how sensitive is the height of the graph, I'll call that Delta Y, to the input, right? To a small change in the input, Delta X, right? So if I were to make a small change, you know, I'll put Delta Y over here, if I were to make a small change in the X direction, right? And that's the only direction I can make a small change in, what is the resulting small change in Y? And so, always, right, Delta Y is going to be some constant, A times Delta X. Right, it's gonna be some constant, A times Delta X. And in other words, A is our derivative, because if you look here, Delta Y divided by Delta X is equal to A, and if you take the limit as X, Delta X goes to zero, you call that D Y by D X. And that's A, and that's our derivative at the point, right? So it's, it's a, so what the derivative is measuring is sensitivity to change in the input variable. Okay? So, we're gonna talk a little bit more about, uh, the, how, how you specifically graph these kinds of functions. But, the idea is, is that, let's say I look at it right from here, right, right from here. Right? You can kind of think of this as a one-dimensional curve, and you can say, well, how sensitive is, how sensitive is it if I were to make the X value constant? Let's say, let's say this, uh, green axis is the X axis, so the green axis is coming towards me like this, and the red axis is going left and right. So, if I were to take this, let's set the X value constant, I'll take a screenshot of this. Right? How sensitive is, how sensitive is the height of the graph, let's say over here, to a small change in the Y value? So this would be, you know, changing, this would be a little Delta Y, right? Well, actually, I guess it'd be, it wouldn't be from there, it'd be from here, so it's a little Delta Y, and what is the resulting change in the height, Delta Z? And so Delta Z is always going to be some constant times Delta Y, or in other words, D Z by D Y is equal to A. So you kind of just like, you fix the value, X, X right here is a fixed value, right? We're not really looking at the X axis, X axis is coming towards us. We can't see any change in the X axis, but we're asking a different question, we're asking, a small step in the Y direction, what is the resulting small step in the Z, in the, in the output? Right, and you take the limit as that goes to zero, and you'd get the derivative at that point. And then, you can do the exact same thing, just shift it a little bit like this, now the X axis is going left and right, right? Now the X axis is going left and right here, take another screenshot, although it's pretty much the same. So now the, so let me just be clear here, this is the Y axis, this is the Z axis, this is the X axis, this is the Z axis. And now I can ask another question, you can, I can say, small step in the X direction, Delta X, what is the resulting small step in the Z direction? So, Delta, Delta Z will be some constant times Delta X, right? Or in other words, D Z by D X, if you take the limit, is equal to A. And now we have another derivative, at the same point, though, right? Both, all starting at this point right here, at this here, so these are each called the partial derivatives, right? This is a partial derivative, this is a partial derivative. So it tells part of the story of the whole sensitivity at that point. So, when you have a two-dimensional function with two inputs, two input variables, um, you have two derivatives. You have one for a small change in the X direction, and one for a small change in the Y direction. And if you have a function with five inputs, you have five partial derivatives, one for each small step in each input variable. So did that kind of answer what you're asking, yeah?
I was just saying, like, I get, I get that, we're like, we've seen how the Z component changing with respect to each of them, but how do we like tie them into, like, I guess in terms of, uh, statement? How do we tie them together into saying, that in comparison with respect to both of them changing, like?
Yeah, so you're saying, like, you're saying, uh, you want one derivative, how do you combine them into one derivative?
Yeah, because isn't that the essential, like, thing of, like, the end, it's, was, was the function again? It's just like, this is the function Z, as, as both X and Y are changing, and we take the partial derivative of each, but in the end, it's still.
One derivative?
As a result, yeah.
So, you're, you're, you're talking about a couple different things there, first of all, there's, there, for a, you know, a function with N inputs, there's N partial derivatives. And you can use each partial derivative as a derivative, it's a, you know, it moves kind of in one direction, but, um, there's just gonna be N partial derivatives. Now, if you're talking about something like this, though, let me graph it like this. And now this is math that we're not going to do in this course, uh, we'll do it next year, but, so I'm not gonna spend, I'm gonna move on after this. But, if you're asking, if we make a, if we start here, and we do a small step in the, whatever I call this, in the Y direction, Delta Y, and a small step in the Delta X direction. Right? That is effectively making a small step in the, this direction, whatever direction you wanna call that. Right? And then we're asking another question, we're asking, what's the resulting change in the height, Delta Z, to the graph? Is that kind of what you're asking?
Yeah, that's exactly what I'm asking.
That's called a directional derivative, directional, directional derivative. Um, and is not something we're gonna do in this course, uh, again, we're gonna do this in, probably another course, um, but yeah, that's, that's, that's a really good question. Uh, and it's a whole other section of another course, so yeah.
So that's three, alright?
Yeah, it's gonna be calc three, yeah, if, so if you wanna look it up, it's called directional derivative.
Nah, I'll look it up after actually finish this semester. Good to know, though, because I thought I was thinking something stupid.
No, that's a great, that's a great idea.
I just, I remember asking CP, like, so what about with respect to both of them, and he chuckled, and then he just continued the class.
Ah, okay, yeah.
How you learn?
From what I can tell, the dumbest questions are usually the ways that they find out, like, the mathematical equations for, like, things in nature.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, why does that work, though, like, it's a dumb question, but.
No, yeah, it's, it's good to ask questions, it's good to ask questions, exactly, yeah.
Alright, well, I'm sorry about that, then we can continue.
Don't worry, they're not a dumb question, it's a very good question, yeah. So that's the idea here. Okay, not related to course material, not this, so it's okay, like, we don't have to worry about this for the test, but, and this is, this stuff up here, you technically, it's for four point three, so for the next test, but you don't have to worry about it for this test. Uh, let's continue just like understanding, uh, multi-variable functions, and how we work with them, so we talked about domain and range, any last questions about this stuff before I move on?
Like, how, where were we about the directional derivative?
I just learned about it somewhere, either probably like a three blue, one brown video, or some other math YouTuber video.
Gee, I, I don't.
So, where were we, where were we then with respect to four point one or four point two?
Yeah, so four, this, this, this stuff, uh, starting, starting here is not four point, this is four point three, so don't worry about anything after, between this line and this line. So now, um, well, we're, there's really, that's, that's pretty much it in four point two, uh, well, that's not true, actually, there's like a couple more things, four point one, yeah, sorry.
But like. So do you think that like, we might not get asked anything on four point one, since it's so like basic and there's nothing really new there? It's, I don't mean, it's nothing new, but it's nothing.
Yeah, there's nothing very important, I don't know, nothing really testable, yeah, I don't know if they're gonna give us anything, but it's definitely important to understand what you're doing.
Or it might be, that they give us like a limit question, they might be like, find the range and the.
Possibly, find the domain, possibly, yeah. So, I just want you.
Sin X over X graph, isn't that one variable, how do you get a three-dimensional graph?
Oh, you're right, that's true. Um, hold on, how did that happen? I must have typed the title wrong.
It's just that any Y axis, it doesn't matter what you choose for Y, you just get the same answer.
You're right, uh, hold on one second.
Yeah, sin X. The one, because, no, sin X because the X, you know?
It's a great, like, represent, visual representation of what that, what that function looks like, it's just.
So this is how hats are made.
The Y part.
Yeah, that's pretty interesting.
Some barrels I made.
Is that, is it there because there, there's a complex component of this function, like you can, is it, is that why?
Um.
Could it be that there's a complex?
No, I, I took it from an example, and the example was sine R over R, but I think R is a, no, that's still one-dimensional. It's still, uh, that's weird.
It's okay.
Oh, wait, no, no, no. The limit of sine X over X is X goes to zero is. The limit of sine x over x as x goes to zero is one. So you can see even here, look at, look at the middle, it's at one, it's at a height of one. Right? Um, so I, r is, so this is actually not bad. Oh, I see what this is. Yes, I just misunderstood what was written. This is sine square root of x squared plus y squared over square root of x squared plus y squared. That's what this is. And we'll get into why that looks like this and why that turns into like a one variable function, but uh yeah, that's the idea. It's sine square root of x squared plus y squared over uh, sorry, yeah, over square root of x squared plus y squared. Here is x squared plus y squared, this, this one here. Just that I show you. Yeah?
Uh, it's just like, I'm still confused, but I don't think I'm gonna like, we need to think too hard at this.
No, don't worry. We'll, we'll get some examples going, so. Here is uh this one, x plus seven sine y, just random one.
Say it's really pretty though.
Some x, here's some exponential one. Yeah, I love looking at them. Um and yeah, these are all from my notes, so. Um, okay. Then, to carry on. So each of these things are called a surface and not really a plot, I guess you can call it a plot, but it's called a surface, not like a, not a curve. So you don't call it a curve anyway, call it a surface cuz it's in three dimensions. Okay, so how would you graph this by hand? Any ideas? If you were trying to do this.
I could into decimals.
Okay, with your hands, so fair enough, but if you only had a pencil and paper, how would you try to?
I can know. Okay.
I don't like the way we did it, maybe? Like, you know how we have longitudinal waves and then um to graph it at a certain time, we would take, keep the time constant, let's say time t equals zero. Right? We would graph it with um, we would graph that slice which is infinitesimally small and then just continue on.
Very good, yeah. That's, that's the one, that's the first way. Yeah, go for it, Irwin, yeah?
I was thinking just like, since we know the radius, like for the two dimensional part, since it's a uh circle, just sort of circle. And then I know that, I know that since it's you know, square root of nine at most, it, the center of it has to be at three. So we have the circle on the bottom, we have the point at zero, zero, three, and it's kind of like, guess it's like a cup kind of shape. Basically free handed from those.
Okay, so that's, that's kind of also a vertical trace that you're talking about there. So you're saying like, you're saying draw something like this. Right? With like that, you're saying, that's kind of also a vertical trace. So let's talk about vertical trace now, what, what that is. Both you and uh and and Vikram said, you know, what essentially a vertical trace is, is we take this shape, we take this shape and I'll actually graph it again here. Oh, I lost it though. Here it is. We take this here. This is still four point one, yeah. We take this shape and we def, we, we, we slice it with something, right? Um, let's see here. Yeah, we slice it. So let's say I'm going to, you know, set uh with a plane, so I'm gonna define a plane like um, well, I want it to be x equals zero, there you go. So let's say I'm putting, I'm slicing with this plane. Right? What would that plane see? Right? What would that plane see? Well, the plane would see something, like if I were to look at it like this, if I were to say this is the plane. Right? It would see something like this cut into it, right? And this is, what is that plane first of all? That is the, uh so if I call, what did I call the green? The green was the x, so, so this is the x z plane. Right? This is the x z plane. And so we call this the x z vertical trace. Right? This is the x z vertical, vertical, not face, trace. And more specifically, what it is, is it's, it's, we say f of a b equals, not a b, a y equals z for some fixed, fixed uh a. E R, right, real number. So if I look here and I just vary this, I just say that's an a. And then I can say, oh no, hold on, a is already that up there, so I'll call it b, I guess. Or is b already taken as well? No, b's not, oh no, hold on, call it u. And I call it u and I can't vary u? No? I thought it would give me a slider like decimals. Okay, never mind. Uh, not five, let's say, so there's, let's say here at four, we have another plane there. So the vertical trace at four, if I were to set four to be our fixed value, well, we'd have nothing. There'd be no, nothing on the graph. If I set it to three, we'd have a single point. And if I set it to, you know, two point eight, two point nine, I guess, maybe two point seven. Two point seven, we're a little bit into the graph, right? And so our vertical trace will be a small number, right? So how do I get the equation of this graph though? I wanna get the equation of this. So let's do our, let's do our actual example here. Let's find the vertical trace on the x z plane for this. And I want specifically find this where a equals zero. So remember, our f of x y was the square root of nine minus x squared minus y squared. And what I'm saying, and remember, this is equal to z. So what I'm saying is that when I say f of a y, right, this is gonna be the square root of nine minus a squared minus y squared equals z. And what I wanna do is, this is the x z plane, I wanna rearrange this to be uh, oh, sorry, this is not, well, yeah, sorry, thi- this is, this is not the same thing as what this is, hold on.
Wait, is that where a is the, the rate? I don't get it.
A is, what do you mean the rate? Like the derivative?
Sorry, like the, yeah, the derivative.
No, no, forget about, forget about derivatives for this for now. No derivatives, yeah. A is just some fixed value here. So uh for some fixed a, for some fixed a E R, it's just some, it's just some value, right? And so we fix it to someplace. That's, that's exactly what I'm doing here when I like define a plane with some value, right? I'm fixing the x value. I only care about x values that have exactly this number, right? A, whatever a is. Right? So I set x to be a and I wanna rearrange this if I'm gonna, you know, plot this on the, right, on the, um, in our case here, I'm gonna have a y z vertical trace. Vertical, not face, trace, I keep saying face. Right? It's gonna be y z because z has to be the vertical axis and it's either x or y on the bottom and I set x to be a fixed value, so it's just y. And so essentially, I'm now just graphing, what I wanna graph here to get it, is I'm just gonna graph, just like we have y equals something happening to x, I'm just gonna graph the graph of z equals the square root of nine minus a squared minus y squared. And to get like something like this, right? So to get, for example, this one, so if this is our y axis and if this is our z axis, right, if I set a equal to zero, right, or not equal to a, a equal to zero, we get this slice and I want the equation of that. I want the equation of that curve. So, you know, just plug that in. I said a was zero, so the equation of that curve is gonna be z equals nine minus y squared in a square root. Right? And that's a graph, right? That's gonna be specifically this graph, right? It's gonna be specifically, you know, centered at the origin. Go three in each direction. Three, three, minus three, and it's gonna be a graph that looks like that, the height of three. Right? If you put this into decimals, you'd see that it's exactly that. It's exactly the equation of that. So I just set, this is, this is the x, the y z vertical trace. And if we want the x z vertical trace for the same function, so let me just write this here. This is the y z vertical trace. Oh my god, I can't, why do I see, cause he keeps saying face, trace. Um, the x z vertical trace. The reason I had trouble before is because this is the x z vertical trace. This is the y z. I was trying to, I was mixing up the examples a little bit. Um, so essentially, I would just fix y to be some value. So I'm looking for f of uh x b is equal to z. And so what we're essentially doing is we're eliminating one of the input variables. We're setting it to be one fixed value. So that I can graph normally on a two dimensional plot, whatever, you know, like uh as we normally would for some curve. Right? So this is gonna be, in our particular example, uh it's gonna be f, so it's gonna be equal to the square root of nine minus x squared minus b squared equals z. And now for our specific, for a or for b equals zero, I'm gonna say that, you know, this is the graph of the square root of nine minus uh x squared. Which again, is just this same curve, but instead of it being here, it was the y and z axis, now it's gonna be the x and z axis, which is gonna be the same curve. For this particular case, it's not always the same curve, but for this case, it's the same curve.
Wait, just to be clear though, at that point in the middle, is that at y or x equals zero when it's set to a?
Where it's at, where it's set to a is like where I'm moving this, this plane. See, like, so I, I put this plane, I set it, you know, I, I don't know which one's the x and y axis here, but the green axis, let's just say, is the x axis. So I'm setting x, or I'm setting y to be zero, right? Y is zero. This is the y axis here and I'm just setting it to be zero. It's fixed, for some fixed value, it's zero, I'm choosing that. And then I'm just graphing this plot, this curve that I, oops, this curve that I see like this, just graphing that. And that's the vertical.
So when you say for some fixed value, fixing y to equal to zero and then what? Like I, it's, it's straightforward, but I, I still get confused.
Well, it doesn't have to be zero. Look, I'm gonna set it to two point three. And now, I set y to be two point three and I'm drawing the graph of, I'm drawing the graph of of this.
So how does that affect the z equal to square root of nine minus x squared?
Right, so, so let's, yeah, so let's say this was the, what did I say this was? This was the, that's the, that must be the.
Why he said to two point?
This is the y axis, yeah. So, okay, yeah, yeah. So I set, let's say that's the, this was the y axis here. So I set the y to be um two point seven three, so that's like, this is y and this is the x axis. So what I care about is the x z vertical trace, right? That's what this plane is. It's in the x z direction, right? So the x z vertical trace I said was this equation here. Right? This equation here, but I'll do it again. You know what? I'll just do it again. Let's, let's just say. Um, so it's gonna be f uh x z, which means I fixed y, so it's gonna be x b equals square root of um nine minus x squared equals z. Sorry, minus b squared, forgot minus b squared in there, right? And now I'm saying, for this specific one I chose, this specific one I chose was two point three. Right? The specific, I said y equals b equals two point three, right? So that specific curve that you see, the black curve right there, is the square root of nine minus, I'll put two point three here, two point three squared minus x squared.
Okay, yeah.
Equals z. That's this, that's, that's exactly this curve right here.
Yeah, it makes, it make, it's easy to follow though, know that it's not zero, cuz then you actually see the effect.
Yeah, you see, so it doesn't, yeah, it doesn't have to be zero, right? And so the same would be for the y z, so it got pretty messy here, so hopefully I'll, I'll try to be cleaner for the rest of the session, but yeah. This is the y z vertical trace and this is the x z vertical trace.
Same thing, okay. Makes sense though.
Almost the same thing, just like one of the input variables are fixed, it's the other.
We started by doing. Yeah, yeah. It's like, our level of thing is just like replacing the other variable with an a or a b and then just like plugging wherever points we were at into the a or b?
Yeah, exactly. Well, plugging like whatever, whatever slice of the graph you want, right? So I want the slice that's at y equals two point three. So that's the slice here. We only get slices, right? Oops, didn't mean to do that, but it's fine. We only get slices. Because if I'm trying to graph on a piece of paper, I can't graph a three D thing, so I have to graph slices. Um, so we just take a slice like this and that's called the vertical trace. That's what we're doing. We're finding the vertical trace.
And also, off, I'll be off topic. Would this mean that this function is even? Is function even?
Good question. Um, um.
Does even and odd not work in three D?
No, I, I don't think it would be. No, maybe it would.
Cause in the next semester, it's like even.
You would need to have different combinations of it, right? Because in, with a single variable, we had f of negative x is equal to f of x. Right? And we would need to have either f of negative x positive y or something like that. Maybe there is some, maybe there is some identity that like, that is true, but I don't.
Yeah, yeah.
That wouldn't be the exact same thing.
So this, yeah, yeah. I think we could, we could probably just apply the same rules for even and odd to it. It's just that we haven't really done that and um uh this wouldn't be even, actually, I don't think. This would not be.
You know what? There might actually be something, but it probably called something different, same concept.
Exactly. That's probably, that's, that's what I think, yeah.
I like tensors.
Probably like what?
Like tensors in like, like a three D matrices.
Oh, yeah, well, like, yeah, it wouldn't be, wouldn't be exactly tensors, but yeah, it would be something.
I'm not saying, you know what tensors are? It's like matrices, but I call matrices, I call like tensors.
Yeah.
It's something like that.
Cuz they're a little different, yeah, 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 exactly.
Are you done, Kim?
No, follow. So, okay, that is the vertical trace and then we have one more way to um uh graph these things, which are called contour maps. So a contour map. And as you might expect, like, if you think about it, right, we, we've been taking vertical slices. What if I just took horizontal slices, right? So let's do that. Uh delete. Um, and in fact, just to give you a good idea of what's going on here, let's, let's pull up. One second. I'm going to get the help of three blue, one brown.
What do I have here?
But not the whole video, just one quick animation that's here.
I'm reading.
What'd you say?
Adam, you're leveling up, like you're leveling up, Adam.
How? What, what's, what, what?
You're bringing out math videos for us to watch.
You thought I, I said, I can't, I can't hear what you're saying for some reason.
I'm saying like you're kind of evolving, you know?
Oh, I'm evolving. Yes, I am evolving.
My god.
Very much.
Yeah, nice. You know, he's gonna bring out like, like objects, he's gonna bring up like objects, like, you know, this, this pair, this pair is like this function, you know, you see how like it curves, you know?
Okay, here. So you see here, what he had was, let me mark the, yeah, what he had was this graph here. He took a bunch of slices of it, right? Took a bunch of slices of it like this. These are all, you can call them um levels, level, level curves, I think you call them level curves, right? And you take the slice like that and on each plane, you draw the outline of the graph, right? You draw the outline of the graph. So it kinda looks like that, right? You take each outline. And then what you do, so we're still in three D right now. This hasn't helped us, you know, we have a bunch of single level curves, but you know, it, it hasn't really helped us gra- graph it. But what we can do is you take away the graph and you put them all on the same plane. You see? And it kinda looks like that.
You're algebra man, like.
Right?
You're gonna do math.
Yeah, yeah.
It's like when you, uh, when you move from R three to R two, yeah.
It looks like equipotential lines from physics.
It does, it does.
Because I guess that's probably the reason is the why we do it in this.
Yeah, exactly, right? So just get this, get this image, get this, yeah, those are, this, this is the x y plane. This is the z axis. That's the x y plane, right? So these are horizontal planes that you're cutting into it with.
Wait, so like, is it like a standard to have be there like one unit spaced out?
Doesn't matter, doesn't matter. But yeah, it should be constant.
So is that a horizontal trace?
Is that what, sorry?
Is that a horizontal trace?
Uh, you, you don't call it that for some reason, but yeah, that makes sense to me. Call it horizontal trace.
We're gonna like, if you give someone the graph, how do they know that the contour map is like, you know, one units, like how do?
You would say, you would say, so, so usually, yeah, usually, you see exactly what he's doing here, you label it. You label it for like some value. You say f equals three, so like the z axis, on the z axis here at three, right? Or on the z, so on the contour map, it's labeled. Or.
Very geography.
Another, yeah, the topological maps are, are done a lot like this. And another way you do it is with colors, right? So he'll switch you in a second, right? With colors, and this is kind of more complicated, like we don't do it like this. But it gives you an even better idea of like the height of the graph, right? The darker, you know, closer to red is, is the height of the graph above.
Yeah, the geog, the geography thing, it's like in geography, you're like.
This is, this is actually exactly a topology map.
Is it?
Literally the height, it's constant height in terms of both x and y.
Yeah, yeah.
It is, it's just like functions, not like countries.
It's not land per se, it's a topology.
So it's the idea, yeah. So then for.
Oh, the more you know.
For, let's do it. There, there was actually a contour map. Contour plots. I think there was a contour plot and surface. Yeah, I can plug in any function here, I'm pretty sure. So this is one example, right? This is some kind of crazy looking function, right? So the uh, the the red thing here. Don't wanna see all these things, so I wanna see that though. Don't wanna see this, but it doesn't matter. Okay, so the red thing here is this like kind of crazy looking function. Okay, so the red thing here is this like kinda crazy looking function. But our, so it's X squared minus Y squared, but if you wanna see the contour map of it, right, I see that. Right, you take a bunch of slices and you plot them down, and it kinda looks like this. Kinda looks like this, let's try another function here, let's see what, another one, I don't know, let's say, um, uh, sine, sine XY. Can I do that? Sine XY? Does that work? Uh, it doesn't change the graph, so.
I think I have to have a period in between a multiplication sign, I think.
I think I have, oh, you're right, but let me just try putting sine. XY here, whoops, that didn't work.
Wait, we're still on the. The horizontal plane of.
It crashed, oh, no, it didn't crash, there we go.
We're back to the actual question, we were on like, so we found the horizontal. So we got the X and Y, and then we cut it like. I would say vertically, but in the Y, in the Z axis, I would say, and then we kinda mapped it down from like R three to R two. Okay, and then what? Cause like I, these, I don't wanna like get caught up in like the. Other functions and forget what it was actually.
Yeah, okay, yeah, yeah, so this function here, like if we were talking about this and I wanted a contour map of this function, right? I would choose some set values of Z, let's say I'm gonna choose, uh, zero, so Z, yeah.
As, I'm gonna say point five bytes left.
I'm gonna try zero, one, two, three, right? So these are, there's gonna be, we're gonna have four different plots, right? So the first plot is at. Z equals zero, so it's for Z equals zero, I take the function F of XY. Which is the square root of nine minus X squared minus Y squared, and equal that to, set that equal to zero. Well, this, I can rearrange Y equals something, right? I can rearrange that to Y equals something. So it's just gonna be nine minus X squared minus Y squared equals zero. So Y equals the square root of nine minus X squared, right? And this is the plot, this is something I can plot on XY graph, and I'll get some sort of plot, right? So if I say this. You know, if I just do a kind of general sketch, well, this is a circle centered at the origin with radius three, so let's just say it looks like that. Circle centered at the origin, radius three, that is not a circle centered at the origin, radius three. This is just meant to be a nice plot, but there you go. Oh, yeah, that's, well, I I didn't, my grid is bad too, so.
Or or ink to shape, ink to shape.
Oh, that's true, well, that's pretty good. That's fine, that's circle radius three, it's kind of an oval, but it's okay, um, so. That's for Z equals zero, now let's say Z, uh, equals one. So it's gonna be effectively the same thing, and in fact, it's, it's so close to being the same thing. Um, let's just do it in general, how about this? Z equals B, Z equals B. And let's just take the function F of XY. Equals the square root of nine minus X squared minus Y squared, and set that equal to B. This is something that I can set equal, you know, Y equals something, like I said, right? So it's just gonna be. Well, it's gonna be nine minus X squared minus Y squared equals B squared. And then it's just gonna be Y equals the square root of nine minus B squared minus X squared. Right, so now, specifically, now we we can go to Z equals one. Will give us the equation, Y equals, so it's gonna be one squared, so square root of eight minus X squared, oops, eight minus X squared. Um, which is a circle centered at square root eight, I'm sorry, centered at zero with radius square root eight, which would be slightly smaller. Right, slightly smaller. Then for, for Z equals two, I'll just do this quickly, Z equals two will get us. Y equals the square root of nine minus force, nine minus four, so it's gonna be five minus X squared. To circle centered, circle centered at zero with radius root five, which is gonna be a good amount smaller. It's gonna be like that, right? And then for Z equals three, okay, what's that gonna be? It's going to be, um. It's gonna give us Y equals nine minus nine is just going to be.
Zero.
Zero, so I'm just gonna get the square root of negative X squared. Um, which is only one point, yes, that makes sense, actually, I was gonna say, that only has one solution, no, that's the point, uh. The only solution, real solution for Y here is Y equals zero when X equals zero. Uh, there's no other, there's no other solution, so, um, that's only a single point at the origin, zero, zero. And there we go, we have our first contour map.
There are two things, so this seems very, very similar to what would be for the vertical, uh.
It is, it's just that vertical traces, um, you don't like squish together onto one plot. But you can, it's just that it's, it's a little more, like it's useful for the horizontal traces, because it. The, when you squish it together, it's actually describing something, it's describing the height of the graph. It's turning the three D thing into a one D thing, but in a way that it act, not a one D thing, sorry, it's turning the three D thing into a two D thing. But the two D thing is like a little bit more understandable, like these have, these kind of things have more meaning, right? You know, the heights and everything. Um, and so the vertical traces, you ju- usually just take one plane and you look at the curve on that one plane.
Yeah, because, uh, for the vertical traces, like if you do a contour map, it would just be a bunch of like use, right?
Probably, it prob- yeah, it probably won't be very different, right? It probably like all, each contour map, sorry, each, uh, vertical trace. Probably wouldn't be very different compared to each other, right? Depends on the graph, of course, so some of them would be different, but.
Adam?
Yes.
I found out that like a three D function can also be even and odd, just check the discussions.
Okay, let's see. Even symmetry for n dimensional, yeah, okay, so it's, it's, it's about as you'd expect, if you're curious about even and odd multi, so thank you for that. Um, it's about as you'd expect for if, uh, for even and odd multi variable functions, so. If F of X of X one, X two, X three, X N is equal to F of negative ones, just like before. If it, if it, if that's true, then it's even, and if it's odd, then it passes this criteria, if F of X is equal to negative F of negative X. But it's not just F of X, it's F of all the Xs, right?
Yeah, so, uh, in a nutshell, all you have to do is you just, uh, evaluate F of all the parameters, but negated, and that's it.
Yeah, yeah, that's it, so you wanna see, and you wanna just evaluate what that's equal to. Very good, um, so. Let's see. Do I have any questions before I move on now? So that is the vertical trace of the contour map and domain and range. Um, that's it.
Is there actual questions, uh, why am I here? Anyway, like I was checking, like, what kind of questions would they ask us if we're supposed to get this, cause like.
Domain and range, they could ask domain and range, right?
I, oh, yeah, yeah, you're right, it's just, it's just sort of weird, cause like, yeah, I get the vertical trace and the.
Cause that's probably, like, the questions you were asked on that thing, it prob- it looked like questions they could give you on the test as well. Like, here's two functions, how, which one of these functions, you know, is, well, that's for, that's for four point two, but anyway, the, the fu- the questions from. That quiz were, uh, seemed pretty good.
Yeah, yeah, so definitely do your quiz before you do the test, so you can see the kind of questions. That's the advice.
Dude, I hate that water, but just random opinions, I, it's dislike the taste of that.
This water? This is top water, I just like the bottle, this is.
Oh, no, that bottle, that specific brand is very bad.
Well, it's actually not, yeah, yeah, you don't like it, yeah, exactly. Okay, let's move on to four point two, this is limits and continuity. But if anyone has any questions, just let me know.
Yeah, we do a question on four point one, like. I don't know how they would ask a question, I just, I looked at four point one, honestly, I dodged it, so I really love to see that.
It took me fifteen minutes to do all the questions, it was very short, uh, so. It, it's, there's really not that much to do in it, um, so we can, yeah, to try to look like. Pretty much the examples that I did to illustrate all this is enough for four point one. If you understand the examples.
Basically, as long as you know domain and range are blessed.
I would say that's true, and you know, how to do a contour map, like how to find each level maybe, or something like that, but yeah, that's the idea.
But I doubt they're gonna give us a graphic question, cause like, you know what I mean?
I also doubt that, they're not gonna give us any questions that we have to draw, and no, but maybe to find equations, possibly.
The contour lines, the contour lines makes like the most sense of like, hey, do you understand what that means?
Yeah.
In terms of like the, so like, if let's say they gave us a circle with like, like progressively smaller circles as a contour line. I didn't say like, what is the, how would you say that, would you say what is the function of C with respect to X and Y?
No, what is, what is the function of XY? What is the function of XY that gives us, that gives you this plot? I don't think they can do that. I don't think you can go from the contour plot, unless it's some sort of very accurate contour plot with numbers.
Yeah, maybe, alright, I just, I guess I'm overthinking this, cause.
Yeah, don't worry too much about it, yeah, it's really not too bad. Limits and continuity is where I wanted to spend most of the time today, but we're already more than halfway through, but you know, well, obviously, how it's gonna go, um, but. It's, it's not really not too bad, limits and continuity in multi variable functions for our sake. If you were actually trying to calculate limits of multi variable functions, you're gonna have trouble, but we're always. All of our limit questions are gonna have some trick to them that makes it easier to solve, because otherwise they're very hard to solve. So, to introduce you a little bit to what I mean by a limit in, in a multi variable function, right, so. Originally, right, we, again, it's good to think about single variable functions as mapping. The X axis to another axis, to the Y axis, we usually draw them together, but they don't have to be together, they can be wherever they want to be. Um, and so you take a point here, and it maps to some specific point over there on the Y axis, right? So when I say a limit, there's, there's a good idea, there's, first of all, there's only. Okay, limit means a, like approach, we're approaching the value, so there's only two ways we can approach X from the left and from the right. Right, so if the limit exists, that means as I approach X from the left, and as I approach X from the right. I get the same mapping value up here, right? And specifically, that also means like, a, a value, if the limit exists here, a value close to X, let's say, let's choose the blue one. Right, is gonna map to a value close to Y, and if I go closer to X, I'm gonna get closer to Y. That's what it means for the limit to exist around X. Someone's got their mic on. Oh, no, I think it was you or him, okay, nevermind, it's okay, yeah, um, so. That's what it means for the limit to exist here, but in a one dimensional function, so now. When my input space, so this is, this is the domain, domain, this is the range. So now when my input space is two dimensional. And I'm saying this is my point XY, right? Well, how many ways can I approach XY? Okay, well, I can approach from this way, can approach from this way, can approach from this way, approach from this way. I can approach from this way, this way, I can also approach from that way, or maybe that way. Well, no, no, no loops, but it's okay, so, actually, no, I guess they're, I don't know, whatever. So you can, you can, you can approach from any, not only any line, you can approach from any curve. Um, and so, all of these directions, to essentially prove that a limit exists, so for here. We knew the limit existed if the left hand side and the right hand side agreed, because those are the only two ways you could approach the limit, so it was, it was reasonable to say. Well, I'll just figure it out from the left side, figure it out from the right side, if those agree, then the limit exists. Well, with a two dimensional, you know, two dimensional input, I'd have to figure out every single infinite, uh, way, you know. I'd have to compute the infinite ways that there are to approach this value. Right, and make sure that they all agree, right, make sure they all agree, so if I was, if I were, for example, approaching on the line, you know, Y equals. Y equals two, right, up here, oh, that's, yeah, that's Y equals two, um, so. Does that limit, you know, agree with the, with the, you know, the, the line, which is Y equals whatever, three X or something? Well, that doesn't make sense, actually, two X, but whatever, right? So, does that limit agree here? If those two limit agrees, if those two limits agree, great, but that doesn't prove that the limit exists, it just proves that two agree. But, if I were to approach from a different value, so remember, every, when I say approach, I mean. You know, pick points closer to this, right? Remember, this is our domain, it's mapping to a real number line. So, you know, the, the red dot here will map to like right there, let's say. Let's say zero is there, and it'll map to right there, okay? As I get closer, right, if I choose this like blue point right there, maybe the ring of blue points all around, it's gonna map to some, you know, some. Points closer, if that limit exists, right? But for example, let's say, what about right here? Let's say this green point right there. Which is really close, let's say right next to the, the point, and it all of a sudden maps over here. Then, if I were to approach the graph from that point, the limit would not exist, I would get a different limiting value. Right? If maybe that, that green chunk of those points right there, I would get a different limiting value. Which would mean that the limit doesn't exist, because there's a direction that you approach from, where you get a different limiting value. So, one way to show that a limit doesn't exist, okay, so that's, that's, this is an important thing. One way to show that a limit doesn't. Exist is to find a path to it, that, to, to the, to the point. Um. Um, point in the limit. That doesn't. Doesn't result in the same output. We'll get into that exactly how you do that in a second, but. Uh, that's just so you understand kind of theoretically what I'm doing here, right? I'm asking, well, what if there's a path, if. Um, uh, sorry, this is the output as all the others, right? So you gotta compare two. If any of the two paths don't match, the limit doesn't exist. Now, to understand a little bit better of what exactly, how is that possible? I mean, if I choose any point on this graph. Oh, is it crashing? No, it's good, if I choose any point, I was like, choose B right there, the limit exists at B, right? If I approach. The point A here, which we said was, uh, one, negative one, zero. Right, that point down there, if I approach that from any direction, the resulting points always get closer and closer to B, right? Closer and closer to B, but let's take for example. I'm gonna find one from the book here that, from Horowitz's lectures that doesn't exist, so I can use that as an example. So if I were to take the function, I'll delete this, if I were to take the function. Um, F of XY equals. XY over. X squared plus. Y squared. And I want the limit as X goes to zero, okay, limit as X goes to zero, so it's a little hard to see, can I zoom in a little bit better, is it gonna? Is it gonna actually work?
They're dipping this graph, or is it just me not wearing my glasses right now? Oh.
It goes under, it goes underneath, it goes in the negative Z axis here, right? Right? So if you kind of imagine this, right, if you imagine this, what if I approached, now, so it, uh. It, it's supposed to be, okay, the, I mean, it's not supposed to be any value, the limit doesn't exist, but, so the limit as X goes to. I'm gonna take a screenshot, the limit is XXY, I should say, not just X, the limit is XY goes to zero, zero, doesn't exist in this graph. And let's understand why visually what's happening here. So, what, what I'm saying is that, what I said, like I said before, this is the point we're approaching, right there, right? And if the limit does exist, I should be able to approach from any direction, and the, and what I'm approaching, the, the output value that I'm approaching. Should be the same for every direction. But if you look at this, if I approach from here, let's say, this line right there, kind of on the ridge of the mountain like that. The output value that I'm approaching, so if it's kind of like, you know, this green line in the input space is gonna map to, oh, my headphones died, one second. As always, my headphones die. I charged them right before this. But they did not survive. Can someone say something, just so I can see? Okay, yes.
Points like approaches agree, then it's, uh, it's, we'll say continuous, or it agrees?
No, 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 I, what I'm saying is that, you know, uh, if all the points, if all the directions, if you approach it from every direction, and they all. Uh, approach the same value of the output, then the limit exists. But if you can find any, any two paths that don't result in the same output, then the limit doesn't exist.
So it's like, it's like in, in algebra, we're. So it's like, it's like in, in algebra, we had those. Like actually, never let me get, never, let me not get into that, but like basically, we're trying to disprove one of the proofs. Fight to be work for it is, for just to say that it doesn't work, right?
Let me, let me, let me show this, and then hopefully it'll make more sense, let, let me show this right here, right, so. If I'm, I wish we could show a vector on GeoGebra, I probably can, but I just don't know how. If I approach zero, zero on this green path, imagine that's on the X Y plane there, so it's, it's below the graph. It's on the X Y plane, and I'm approaching, the output values that I'm approaching. Something was vibrating, um, the, the output values that I'm approaching are along this ridge, and it looks like it's kind of approaching, is that one? Can't tell if it's one, it's, it's not one, it's just some upper value, I don't know. It's approaching some value right here, right, something on the Z axis right there. But if I approach from, on the X Y plane again, from this direction. Well, now I'm approaching some value down there. Right, because look, the, here the graph is, the graph here is underneath the X Y plane. Graph is underneath the X Y plane right here. Right, so it kind of looks like this, this, if that helps, I don't know if that helps, but. It's underneath the X Y plane, so the limiting value there is zero. So, not zero, sorry, negative, some negative value, here it's some positive value, here it's some negative value on the Z axis. So I'm approaching from two different paths, they don't both equal the same number, so the limit does not exist. In fact, if you look at the graph, if you look at the graph, it's not even rendering it properly, but. Kind of like, you see kind of like the, it fills it in for a second, see like here, it fills it in.
That was just a viewing angle.
At C, at zero, zero, every single value on the Z axis up to, I guess, zero point five, it looks like it's zero point five for some reason. Uh, is possible, it could be any of them. Right, you can say that F of that value is anything from negative zero point five to zero point five, because if you look at the graph. Now, it's not rendering it there in the middle, because it's not, doesn't, the limit doesn't exist there in the middle. Um, but the idea is that any value from negative zero point five to zero point five is possible to get as a limit, like let's say I approached. Let's say I approached from, uh, this path, I'm gonna have to just sort of look at my mouse for this one. But if, if I approach from this path, I would get some value like zero point three as my limiting value. Which is not the same as zero point five, and not the same as, you know, zero, if I, you know, approach on the X axis, or if I approach some other way, right? Okay, so now, okay, first of all, any questions about this before I go into mathematically how to do this?
But I, I'm gonna have to watch your recording, cause I have to go, see.
You have to get going?
You're going until eight, you just start, are you stopping at eight?
Well, we'll see, probably won't, like this, limits is the last thing here, so probably won't take too long to finish this, so.
See you guys.
Okay, bye Joshua, bye, have a good night. Okay, so. Let's do this like mathematically, unless anybody has any questions before I start, right, so.
So for this form, I'm just doing it visually, I'm just saying that like, it just kind of gets weird around the areas, therefore, it doesn't exist.
Yeah, exactly, but let's, let's do this exact question mathematically though, let's, let's do the exact question, so the, the question is. Um, does, does. Example, does the limit. As X Y goes to zero, zero, so that's how you write that, we're going, we're approaching the point zero, zero. As X Y goes to zero, zero of X Y over X squared plus Y squared exist. So if you ever have a question like this, it probably doesn't, that's why they're giving you the question. So your goal is to find two paths that. Make it so that this, you know, you can, you get different results from your upper and lower bound. Okay, how do you choose a path, first of all? Well, you just set, you know, this is the X Y plane, I can define a line, let's say this line right here, if this is the X. Axis and this is the Y axis, then this is just the line Y equals X. Right, this is just the line Y equals X. Subbing that into our equation here, subbing that into our equation here, I get that. Um, I can turn this limit into. The limit. As. X goes to zero, single variable limit there. Of X squared over X squared plus X, uh, plus X squared. X squared plus X squared, which is going to be one half, I got a half out of that. Right, so that's, that's approaching on this red line. So I got one half out of it, I don't really know how I got a half, but I did, whatever, I got a half out of it, that's the limit that I get when I approach on Y equals X. Okay, so this is my first, that doesn't mean anything, it doesn't mean the limit exists, it just means that when I approach on that line, I get Y equals X. Just, I mean, I get one half, just like if I approach on the left of a single variable limit, that doesn't mean the limit exists, it just means that when I approach on the left, I get one half. If I approach on the right and also get a half, that means the limit exists. But here, we can't just approach on the left and right, we'd have to approach in infinitely many directions to prove that it exists. So for that reason, if it says, does this exist? It's very hard to prove that it does exist, so it's most likely that it doesn't. So this is our first, first path, so this is path number one. Path number two that I'm gonna choose. Path number two that I'm gonna choose is Y equals zero. So if I said this was, this was our Y axis, I keep forgetting which one I'm calling Y and X, so this is our Y axis. That means I'm asking, okay, well, if I were to approach on the Y axis like this, going in like that, right? What's the limiting value that I get? What's the limiting value if I approach on Y equals zero? So if I. Sub that in, right, to our equation, that's gonna be zero over X squared, which is zero. So I should say, this is the limit as Y goes to, sorry, as X goes to. Zero of zero over X squared, I should say. Um, X times zero over X squared, which is zero. Notice. This does not equal, therefore, limit does not exist. Right, I showed mathematically that as I approach on two different paths. Right, the first path was Y equals X, and the second path was Y equals zero. As I approach on those two paths, then, um. We, uh, get two different limiting values, which means the limit does not exist, exactly the same as saying, you know, I. Approach a one dimensional limit from the left and the right, I get two different values, the limit doesn't exist.
And like, is there any way to prove that it does exist?
Yes, there is, yes, 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 you can prove a limit does exist, but that's not what we, we don't do that in this course.
Yeah, cause like I'm guessing, trying a bunch of a path is not very, you know, useful, you just keep trying paths, you know?
Yeah.
Did you say we don't do, like proving it exists?
Uh, not, not unless there's some trick that makes it easy.
So what the heck was my prof doing?
The epsilon delta thing?
Yeah.
Yeah, you don't, you don't need to know the epsilon delta definition.
Why was he going over like five of those questions?
Really, he went over five, five?
I don't think it was five, I think it was like maybe two or three.
But like he did, he actually did examples using the epsilon delta definition?
We, we kind of learned how to do it, and then he said, oh yeah, I, he said you probably won't be evaluated on this, but I thought, oh, that just means. He doesn't expect it, I didn't know that means it's not.
No, Horowitz, Horowitz showed the definition and then said. Um, but we're gonna do everything we can to not use this definition, we're not gonna do, do everything we can to not have to use it. But this is just like the definition of the limit. And he didn't do one example with the epi- epsilon delta definition, he didn't do one.
It's confused, it's, 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 it's a process, you have to prove, you're doing a proof, you're doing a math.
It is a proof, yeah.
So it's gonna be, it's gonna be a little long.
And if anybody's interested in learning it, I'm going to be, uh, doing a bunch of math over the summer, and that is one of the things on my list to like. Fully understand how to use the epsilon delta definition, so if anybody's interested, just let me know for the summer. Um, but yeah, uh, so we don't do that, we don't show that a limit exists, but we do show that a limit doesn't exist. So let's try another one. Someone said something, sorry, what? Erwin, could, Erwin, could you mute your microphone?
Yeah.
Thank you. Yes? Uh, I'm, yeah, not like for a course, cause I don't have a course, but yeah, I can, I'll be doing some sort of. Math things, so if people wanna join me, I mean, I'll do it myself if nobody wants to join me, but, uh, yeah, if people.
I shall join you.
Yeah, that sounds good, that sounds, that sounds good. Uh, so just like, yeah, if anybody here is interested, anybody's welcome, just DM me.
Probably best to keep refreshed on the math for the next, next math class.
Yeah, exactly, that's exactly right, we're gonna be, I'm gonna do a lot of linear algebra too, because, uh, we're doing vector calculus next semester, next year, so. Good to know linear algebra. Um, okay, let's do the last couple limit questions that Horowitz did here, and then a bunch of them afterwards are. Just a bunch of definitions, he didn't do that many examples actually in four point two, I'm surprised. Okay.
That's a good thing though, right?
Yeah, I guess it is.
Doesn't expect like you to.
Do anything crazy, doesn't expect you to do anything crazy with it, right, yeah, so. Let's try another one, show, show that the limit. As X Y approaches zero, one. Of four X Y squared over, sorry, that's not X to the Y squared, X Y squared. Uh, X squared plus three Y to the four. That doesn't exist. Why does that not exist? Doesn't exist. Exist, did I copy that wrong, what, four X Y squared, X squared plus. That. Why doesn't that exist? I'm confused. That should be zero. Huh? Oh, yeah, no, I think. Uh. Yeah, there's no answer, I think, I stopped, I, I just stopped writing at some point, so he probably said something like, oh, I guess it does exist, or something like that. Or he tried, well, so one thing, one interesting thing here is, this, so first of all, this limit exists because. If I were to plug in the point zero, one, I get four times zero times one squared over zero squared. Plus three times one to the four, which is zero, which is defined as zero, it's fine. Um. Right, and I go, it's gonna be zero over three, which is zero. Um, so it exists, I can just sub it in and I get it, in fact, it's even, well, well, I don't know if it's continuous, but it. I, I don't know if it's continuous, probably is continuous, I don't know, um, but. It does exist, but we can even show quickly, this is, I guess this is the reason he did it, is cause it's an opportunity to show this. Is if I, I can approach from any direction and the limit is gonna be the same. So for example, if I approach on Y equals M X. Right, M X, oh, I forgot to mention one thing, which I have to mention, uh, for the last question, um, Y equals M, if I approach on this path. Then, um. Wait a second. G of X, limit is X goes to zero, G of X. Wait a second, that doesn't make sense. Limit. X goes to zero. Of. Let's just, let's just move on from this question, cause it doesn't make sense, it, it does exist. And it, like, I don't have the answer to the example, so let's just, let's just do the next example. And it'll have a lot more to show, I also think there's like something weird going on with it, so, okay, let's just do the next example. Um, show this limit. Show this limit gets zero, yeah, okay, so show this limit doesn't exist. So show that this limit doesn't, I'll just, I'll just write the limit, so limit as X Y approaches zero, zero. Of X Y squared over X plus Y squared. Let's actually graph it again, it's good to, I like graphing it, cause it gets you like a little. Visual understanding of why it doesn't exist, right, not just because some math, like you can maybe see why, so X squared. You know what, I'm gonna refresh the page, cause. It's not, it's not agreeing with me. So, uh, F of X Y. Equals. The fraction, X Y squared over X plus Y squared. So we're approaching zero, zero, so as you can see from here, right? Doesn't look too bad, but if you're looking, I should, why don't, why aren't I full screen? Um, if you're looking right at it, right? Whoop. Um. Okay. Copy this and do it again. Refresh the page, probably can reset the view somehow, but. Oh, doesn't let me copy and paste, okay. F of X Y equals. X Y squared over X plus, what was it, X plus Y squared. So we have this thing, if you look, you kind of have this like parabola right here. That's right there, right, that's kind of our. Um, you know, what, we're getting a squares there, and you see, it, it has a vertex right on the origin. So any point there is what is defined as zero, zero, any, well, it's not defined, it's just any point there, any value. Can count on that axis, now of course, GeoGebra isn't actually graphing it properly, but. Any value there on zero, zero could be the answer, um, from, it looks like just from negative infinity to infinity. So. If I, oh, and that actually makes sense for what we choose to show that doesn't exist, so if I were to approach. Here, let me just note something here, if I were to approach from any line, right, so if I approach from the line here, I'd get zero, if I approach on the line here, I'd get. I get zero, if I approach from this line, I kind of go like around, but then I still end up at zero. If I approach from this line, I'd still end up at zero. So it looks like approaching from any line will get me a, a value of zero for my limit, let's try that though. So I'm gonna say, I'm gonna choose Y equals M X, any value for M. Right, and let's try to plug that into the limit, I'm gonna say the limit as X goes to. Um, zero of X. M squared, X squared over X plus M squared, X squared. Right, and the limit as X goes to zero of this, well, let's see, can we do it, I can't do it quite yet. I can factor out an X, so it's gonna be the limit as X goes to zero of. M squared, X squared over one plus M squared, X, and this is zero. For any value of M, so I can approach from any line, Y equals M X, and the limit is always zero. Okay, now, what if I were to approach along this parabola? Along this parabola. Well, if I were to approach on that parabola exactly, right, or exactly on that parabola, I would get a limit of infinity. Because this kind of parabola kind of goes to infinity, and that goes to right there, um. Right, goes to like, this, this, the whole shape of the parabola here, you can, you have to imagine like it goes up to infinity, right? Cause it just cuts off because of the visualization, but it goes up to infinity. So. Or I guess it doesn't have to be infinity, it just has to, it just doesn't exist, because any value along there counts. So. Um, what ends up being is that this is the, uh, this is the X axis, this is the Y axis. So this would be negative X squared, negative X squared. So if I try to approach on Y equals. Oh, not negative X squared, what am I talking about? Um, no. Ah, where did I go?
Couldn't you do X equals Y squared?
Yeah, sorry.
Cause you can use Y as a variable as well, right?
Yeah, yeah, you can use it as much you want, sorry, I, I kind of messed this up, this is the Y axis, this is the X axis. This is the Y axis, this is the X axis, so this is X equals negative Y squared. X equals negative Y squared, this thing right here, X equals negative Y squared, how would you figure that out? Um, you would just maybe after you try all the lines, you just try this and see what happens. Yeah, I would honestly recommend just doing M X to begin with for everything, and then just seeing what you get. Um, if it's always zero, then you know it's all the lines, but that doesn't mean the limit exists, because now if I try to approach on. Y equals negative, no, X, sorry, X equals negative Y squared. Then I'm gonna take the limit as Y goes to zero of, uh, so it's gonna be negative. Y squared, Y squared over negative Y squared plus Y squared. Right, so what I'm gonna get is negative Y to the four over zero does not exist. Which. Which is not equal to zero, so we just showed therefore the limit does not exist.
Actually, it also works for X equals Y squared, just.
Okay. X equals Y squared?
That is, because it, I thought it would be going to negative infinity, but it doesn't.
I am surprised to hear that, hold on, why does it work for X equals Y squared? If I were to say X equals Y squared, this would be, um, Y squared, Y squared over two Y squared. Which would be Y squared over two. Um, and we're, sorry, we're taking the limit, limit, all these things, sorry, we're taking the limit. Limit as Y goes to zero, limit as Y goes to zero, so this like gets zero as well out of it. Which matches what we were getting with the lines.
Oh, I guess it doesn't.
Yeah. But for negative Y squared, we get does not exist, which means that. So yeah, so once you're out of options with the lines, you gotta start trying basic parabolas, and they won't give, they won't give you anything more complicated than that. This is, this I would say is the most complicated limit question. Okay, one thing to mention quickly, though. Choosing paths, choosing paths. I'm gonna write it out, how Horowitz wrote it out. There are rules to how you choose the paths, so. So say that F of X Y approaches L. As X Y approaches A B, okay? Along, along Y equals G of X. If, so notice I'm saying, say this, if this. If the limit. As X approaches A. Of F of X, G of X. Equals L. This is formally how you choose a path. Okay, so you you can say that, you can say that F of X approaches L, pretty much the limit, this is say, say the limit. Exists, uh, well, not exists, sorry, but the limit is. Still can't even say that, just that, all we can say is that F of X is approaching L, as X approaches A B. Along some path, if this is true, and this is what we've been doing, we've been setting Y equal to something, Y equal to something. And then just evaluating the single variable limit on that. If that is some L, then we can say F of X approaches L along this path, if you're approaching it along that path. The very important thing, though, very important thing. Is that the limit as X approaches A. Of G of X has to equal B. Must equal B, the limit as X approaches A of G of X has to equal B. So for all these examples we looked here, I chose, let's say, M X here, so I'm choosing G of X equals M X. Does the limit as X approaches A equal B, that's true, because the limit. As X approaches A, A is zero, of G of X, which is M X, does equal B. Which is zero. So it did pass this, did pass this test, right, should have said this first, this should have been, I I don't know why I didn't do this first. This is how you choose the paths, this is the rules you do for choosing the paths, I am not able to approach the limit on, let's say, M X plus one. Because that doesn't make sense, right, I, like, if I were to take this limit and approach on. Y equals, I don't know, two X plus one. Right, I don't, I don't ever touch zero zero, so I can't approach there. Right, so that that won't at all help us evaluate the limit, because it never passes the point zero zero. But I am able to test, um, you know, two X, which gives me a plane that passes through the origin like this, right? So there is our criteria for how we choose a path to follow a limit. Okay, then we have a whole bunch of definitions of things, which you can look at my notes if you wanna see. Doesn't particularly matter. We won't be tested on it, it never came up in homework practice. Doesn't really matter, there is one more thing. There is one more thing, yeah, is that what you were saying, is there anything else? So, okay, first of all, all the limit, limit laws, so the limit laws are true and are useful, I should say. Uh, they're not just some random stuff, um. So, I mean, they're never random stuff, but they're not like, you know, you you don't really think about them, they are pretty useful. So. These are the limit laws, as you'd expect, addition, subtraction, constant multiples, multiplication. All this extends also to higher dimensional functions, as you'd expect them to, um, these are not in full generality, but that's okay. Um, exponents and all that. So I essentially have two more examples, and then after that, it's just sort of people with questions. My second last example is show. That this limit, limit exists. Ooh, okay, so are we gonna have to use the epsilon delta definition, that's how you would show any limit exists? Are we gonna have to use anything crazy, or not, um, of course, we're, so the limit is X squared, Y squared. Sorry, I should say, the limit as X Y approaches, approaches what, zero zero. Of X squared, Y squared over X squared plus Y squared. So, let's graph it, so we get an idea of does this exist or not, so it was X squared, Y squared, so I've already almost graphed it, X squared, Y squared. Over X squared plus Y squared. Well, if you look at the graph, there's no reason that the limit of zero shouldn't be zero, right, if I get rid of this. There's nothing funny going on, I approach from any path, any curve, anything, it all approaches zero, there's nothing happening here. The 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 whole surface levels out to zero, and it looks like the value of the limit is zero, just by, just visually. The limit as X Y approaches zero zero is zero visually, show that, though. So if I were to try some path, um, you know, I could try, I could sit here forever and try every path. I could show all the lines with Y equals M X, I could show all the quadratics with Y equals A X squared. Right, I could show all the cubic functions, I could show every, you know, trig function that, you know, translated in some way, I could, you know, we'd be here forever. So there must be a different way to do it. There's the epsilon delta definition, we don't do that. So another method that's useful is to convert, convert to polar form. And now, the polar form of a function is, um, just another way to write a function. In terms of some angle theta and a radius, um, and. We don't really, we haven't talked, I I have never had a math course that talked about it formally, um, and. They don't talk about in calculus, so maybe we'll do it next year, I'm not, I'm not really sure, they, uh, it seems like it's a common thing to skip for some reason. Just another way to write a function, uh, which is hopefully something I'll be doing in the summer as well, so, another little tidbit, if you wanna actually learn what polar form is. But for, for the prop, you know, for the sake of four point two, you can just think of it as a change of variables. Just change X to R cosine theta and Y to R sine theta. Let's do that to this, it's gonna be, uh, R squared cosine squared theta. R squared sine squared theta over, so it's gonna be R squared. Cosine squared theta plus R squared sine squared theta, and what's the limit, though, what's the limit? Well, theta can always be any number, polar form, theta can be any, doesn't matter, that that doesn't change anything, so we're actually taking the limit. As R goes to zero. That's all we care about, the limit as R goes to zero. And we can do this, actually, because if you look on the bottom, R squared, so it's gonna be R to the four. Cos squared theta, sine squared theta, so that doesn't turn into anything, but on the bottom here, R squared. Cos squared theta plus sine squared theta, that's one. Limit as R goes to zero, so this turns into the limit as R goes to zero of R squared. Cos squared theta, sine squared theta. Which is zero. And there we go, for any value theta, this is going to zero, so this whole thing goes to zero, and there we go. We just showed that the limit exists, this limit, this limit will be equal to this limit.
Okay, but I have a question.
Yeah.
Wait, can you hear me?
Yeah, I hear you, sorry, I did, yeah, I was waiting for your question.
If you had a question where the limit does not exist, but you would use this method, what, what would you get?
You would get something too complicated to solve, or your, or your single variable limit wouldn't exist. Like, like, like here, one second, yeah, this, this single variable limit, just like, you know, we can have single variable limits that don't exist, right? Like this, this here is the single variable part, after I do the change of variable, I'm only doing a single variable limit, here it's a two variable limit. So if this doesn't exist, this won't exist either.
Okay, thank you. And then the, the regular stuff, for you to like, from the positive side and negative side, and those don't match, and then you just say, they doesn't exist.
Yeah, this is just a normal, this is just a normal, single variable limit.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I I I came back.
Don't be, don't be sorry.
No, it's like, I saw that you guys, I came back at polar form, I was like, wait.
Yeah, so, yeah, polar form is, like, don't worry too much about it, it's just a change of variable, you just do.
Yeah, isn't that what we did before, though? Yeah.
How, how?
No, as in polar form, sounds familiar, just can't remember from where, is it from linear algebra?
From linear algebra, you can have a polar form of a, polar form of a, a complex number.
So, yeah, I was, I just, like, I was wondering, like, so for this question. For what, um, he was asking, I guess if you set maybe one func, one, one of the variables to the other. And then if you try like different paths, like if you had. Um, X squared equal, or Y, or something like that, and then it doesn't always give you the same thing if you did. X squared equal Y squared, if you don't always get the same limit, then that's how you know.
Then the limit doesn't exist.
Doesn't exist.
Yeah.
The big black question is actually made that pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's good, yeah, there you go.
Yeah, I like, like, I think Adam said, you're probably not gonna be asked to do a proof, or like to prove that a limit exists.
Yeah, he will not be, no.
But he, he gave us, wait, as in prove it, as in a question like this, you don't think we'll get a question like this?
Like this, yes, this, you could get a question like this, convert it to polar form. Uh, how do you know to convert to polar form is you have X squared plus Y squared, if they ask you to show that a limit exists, it's probably this.
Cause we didn't, I didn't go over this in in lectures with CPW.
No?
Now, CP likes this.
We just did the epsilon delta thing, maybe that's why, I don't know, but, um.
Yeah, I don't know, this, this is the method, though, this is the way to do it, Horowitz went through this, so. And the rest of the section is definitions of a bunch of stuff, so. Um, I can do another polar form example, do you wanna see another polar form example?
Sure, because I still didn't catch this one.
Um, so, e- evaluate this limit if it exists, the limit as X Y goes to zero zero. Of, uh, X squared plus Y squared over. X squared plus Y squared plus one. In a square root, oops, in a square root minus one. So if I just plug in zero zero, I get, I get undefined, so that that doesn't help us. We want the limit, so the function isn't defined at zero, but the limit. Anytime you see X squared plus Y squared, let's just quickly go over, right, so remember the, the conversion is this, right, this is the convert to polar form thing. Right, so you'd use this, anytime you see X squared plus Y squared, this is gonna happen, you're gonna get this, you're gonna get this. Turns to one, and it's just gonna turn into R squared, so in polar form, X squared plus Y squared equals R squared. So I'm just gonna do that, right here, that's, I'm just gonna plug that in right here, so limit as X Y goes to zero zero. Is of R squared, sorry, well. Equals the limit as R goes to zero, so the limit of this equals the limit. As R goes to zero of R squared over R squared plus one minus one. So that doesn't help us too much, I mean, we're still in a square root here. Uh, we're still, it has a denominator of zero, oh, and. My notes on this, and just saying this equals two, so let's see how does this equal two. Um, oh, I guess I can, uh, multiply with the conjugate and see what happens there, so the limit. As R goes to zero of R squared over square root of R squared plus, plus one minus one. Times square root of R squared plus one, plus one over square root of R squared plus one, plus one. So this is gonna turn into, well, I'm, the top, I'm just gonna leave as the limit as R goes to zero of. R squared times R, well, I'll call it, I guess I'll call it R squared, square root, no, I'll call it this, R. Square root of R squared plus one minus one, no, plus one, over R squared plus one, plus one. Yeah. Um, which is somehow two, this is plus one here. Limit as R goes to zero. How is that two? That doesn't make sense. That would be zero still.
Um, when it becomes R squared plus one minus one.
Where, sorry, what would it, sorry?
In the denominator. Maybe R squared plus one minus one.
Why would it be minus?
Yeah, it would be minuses, yeah. Because it's.
Oh, yeah, it would be minus one, yeah, you're right.
So then you, R squared and those cancel out, and then you get zero, it's one plus one.
Oh, okay, okay, yeah, there we go, that worked.
Thank you.
Thank you, plus one, plus one, limit as X goes to zero is, as R goes to zero is.
Who knows?
There we go, so there's another polar form example that I did.
But we didn't have to do it in polar form, I guess it'd just be simpler, because you get rid of what, an extra variable?
I, we don't, we, we, we're not expected to do this in, in not polar form, in this course.
Oh, really?
Yeah, you, you'd have to use polar form to solve this question.
Because you can solve this in polar form, though, there has to be a line that would show, right?
Like an, like a, like a way to approach it? Yeah, you, you can approach this, like, like a Y equals G of X, and the G of X approaches it. Yeah, like, you can do that, and it'll all equal two, but it doesn't matter how many of them you show, that that doesn't mean the, the limit exists. It just means that when you approach on those paths, they equal two.
The thing is, we can only really prove by contradiction.
Yeah, yeah, you can show that the limit doesn't exist by showing some example.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to remember.
If it doesn't exist, yeah, I think that's the thing you were mentioning about linear algebra.
Yeah, that's, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I I just thought about it right now, like, whenever we tried to prove something was or wasn't something, we would find a counter example.
Yeah.
Especially when we had like the different, I don't remember what it was, I think like by multiplication or under addition. It's kind of, like, something like that.
Vector space.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, there you go.
Prove that.
I do.
Although proving that was like, not totally out of the course, I mean, it's something we were expected to do, so, yeah, but yeah. Um, this is just another example that I wanted to show, because, um, it's, I don't know, it's interesting, um. We, it kind of looks weird, I mean, if I were to plug in. If I were to plug in zero zero, or zero one, I mean, I would get one squared sine zero over zero. Which is zero over zero. So that doesn't really help us, um, and. I can't convert it to polar, I mean, I could, but I have, it's gonna be inside of a sign, that's gonna get really complicated, um, and. Maybe we could try that, actually, might be interesting, but for now, nothing really what you can do, um, but. What you also can notice is that this is the limit. As X Y approaches zero one of Y squared. Times sine X over X. Okay. I can use. This property. Yeah, sorry, can you say something?
Sorry, never, never.
Good, I can use property number six to separate this into the limit. As X Y approaches zero one of Y squared times the limit. As X Y approaches zero one of sine X over X. And one times one equals one, the limit equals one.
When, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So you, any limit you get will have some kind of trick to it, there'll be something that you can do to show the limit exists. Probably just by plugging it, I just plugged in points here, right? And so, I mean, this limit is something we know from Calc one, this limit is just I plugged in one, and that's it.
Is there, um, limit like that with for cos?
Yes, cos X plus one, something like that, cos X plus one over X.
Cause I never seem to remember the cos when I was.
Oh, yeah, it's always easy to forget, I think it's, it's definitely some, something, is it a plus or minus one over, I think X.
Uh, one minus cos X over X equals zero, the limit as X goes to zero of one minus cos X over X equals zero.
Could you write it?
Yeah. So the limit as X goes to zero, X goes to zero. Of one minus cos X over X equals zero, and what I just used up there was the. And what I just used up there was the limit as X goes to zero of sine X over X equals zero.
I wonder if this has some weird connection, like, to the sine X squared plus cos X squared equal one? It's, 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 it's not there, but like, I feel like somewhere, some proof is why that works.
Possibly, possibly, yeah, I don't, I didn't, I I forget the proofs now for these two, I did watch them at some point, but I forget the proofs for these two, but. Uh, I'm, anytime you have a proof with the trig functions, that's a very useful thing, sine squared, sine squared.
Is the proof for the sine X one, like, does it have something to do with like the small angle approximation?
I don't think so, I don't, I'm not sure.
I don't remember what the small angle fucking approximation is.
No, it has to be, I can't do it back, like, the small angle approximation, it's just like. The closer you're, like, in radius, right, like, the closer you approach zero, the, like, if you have. What you say, the more, the closer you approach zero, sine X basically approaches X. So you're basically dividing two things by the same thing, you know what I mean, you're dividing, the same number, so it's one.
Oh, sorry, this is, this is one, yeah, this is one.
Oh, wait, did we write zero for the?
Yeah, this is, this is one, yeah, yeah, so you can think of it like that, for sure, yeah, as sine X approaches zero.
What did you just change?
It effectively become, this was, this was a zero, I changed it to a. As sine X approaches zero, it effectively becomes X, the the remainder between this first degree Taylor polynomial and this. Uh, approaches zero, so you can say it's X over X, which is one. That's one way to think about it, that's not a proof at all, but that's just like one way to think about why this is true.
Is the cos one also one, or is it that one zero?
This one's zero, this one's zero.
Okay.
Yeah, are we gonna do any more?
The small angle approximation is found from this equation too, it could be the other way around.
Yeah, it could be, I don't know, I don't know, I just, I don't think, I don't think you can use an approximation in a proof, but if you're using it the other way around, yeah.
Where are we, are we coming to date? Are we gonna do any more questions, or?
Um, that's pretty much all I had planned, uh, one, one quick thing is like continuity, uh, so. Is that even in my notes, did I even mention it somewhere here?
Isn't it just if the limit exists and it's equal to the same thing on that?
Exactly, look, uh, a function is continuous at A B if, is it not on here?
Wait, you print them afterwards?
Yeah, like my, like these notes.
Yeah, yeah, I know, the one you typed with.
These notes, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yes, I printed, I have them here printed, yeah, uh. I just didn't highlight it properly, yeah, a function is continuous at A B if the limit. As X go, um, X Y goes to A B of F of X Y equals F of A B. This is continuity. Um, and so. Uh, yeah, that's pretty much just know this, and that's useful. And you can show that things exist, that the things are, I mean, things are are continuous at certain points. And yeah. Uh, that's it from four point two, and that's it from four point one, so, uh, does anybody have any last questions?
If you have any question like tomorrow, can we extend it to you, like?
Yeah, you can send me questions, you can send me questions, yeah, for sure.
I just have one question that has to do with these identities.
Okay.
Like, that's, sine X over X, we know, like, that's something that we've gone over, would it also work with, like, sine X Y over X Y?
Yes.
Same identity?
Yes, that would be the same.
Even though it, like, cause like, I only know if it works with that, okay, so if it is the same, then it.
Le- limit as X, I mean, I I say that pretty confidently, I mean, I'm not that confident, but. Limit as X Y goes to zero zero of sine X. X Y over X Y. Uh. Uh, I would, I would say that's one, let's, let's check.
I can think of a reason it wouldn't, but in case there's some weird thing with like, oh, it's two dimensional, so there's like some extra.
Yeah, let's just give it a try, let's see what, let's see what it is, so, um, sine. Come, sine. X Y over. We might have to give it a second to load, X Y. Nope, don't have to give it a second, yeah, looks like one. Looks like one as well. I'm, I'm pretty sure it's just, what, I'm pretty sure it's just, um, if you're taking the limit. As something goes to zero of, well, as a- any number of things go to zero. It's kind of like commas, any number of things go to, any number of zeros. Uh, I don't know if this makes sense, of sine something over something equals one. It's any, I'm, I'm pretty sure it's that. Does this make sense, I don't, that's, yeah. Didn't really write it wrong.
I just wanted to make sure in case that pops up, cause that's something that I can see actually being like on the test.
Okay, any questions, any last questions? I'm here, that's everything for today, if anyone, you know, if anyone's gonna get going by, have a good night and, uh, good luck tomorrow, but yeah.
So why is one minus cos X over X equal to zero again?
The limit, the limit as X goes to zero of that is zero, um.
Cause like, why would it be like one minus one? Oh, cause it's like one minus, wouldn't that be one or something?
Well, cosine of zero is one, so one minus one, it would be zero over zero, which is indeterminate. Um, one thing we could do, which might be interesting, let me look on Desmos for a second. Yeah, so if I look on Desmos. And I look at one minus cos X. Cos, one minus cos X. At zero, at zero, it has a tangent of zero, right? So it's, you can say it's first degree Taylor polynomial approximation.
You need that, you have the leg boards.
At. Hold on. No, that won't help us, it helped us here, but it won't help us there, because I want this top to be zero, and I want this to be.
Okay, here's my, would it, would it, any form have to square the thing, it goes squared everything, would it have?
If you squared this?
Yeah, would that have, cause then you would get like one minus.
It would still be zero, it'd still be zero.
Cause the, cause then, will we get one plus, or minus two cos. X. Plus. Cos, like, plus cos X squared, and then you can, I could go down together, get a sign?
But once you square it, you're changing the function, it's no longer the same function.
Yeah, I guess, okay, then never mind.
It would have the same limit, but, uh, yeah, it wouldn't be the same function anymore, so you'd be just proving something else, there's a way to prove this, um, Khan Academy did a video, if you wanna look at.
Got tabbed up proofs, you know? So you want to work, guys? So I can get food, bye, guys.
Okay, bye, have a good night, have a good night.
Yeah, good night, guys.
Bye, everyone.
Bye, have a good night.
Let me know how the proof goes.
Yes. That's good.
So what were you thinking about the summer, you wanna do like, uh, classes, or what, what are you thinking on do over the summer?
Oh, just like I'm planning on, uh, I have a bunch of math that I'm planning on doing, I have a little, you know, uh.
Like here or on your?
No, I, with anybody that wants to join me, so, yeah.
Yo, can you do linear, cause last semester, oh.
No, I'm specifically planning on typing all my la, all my linear algebra notes into LaTeX, so I'm gonna be going through everything again.
Yes.
So we can spend, you know, doing that, yeah.
Would it be like a smaller study, I'm guessing it'll be a small study group, like?
I mean, I, just, just because less people are interested in doing that if they don't have to do math.
I, I feel like, most people like, right now, they might say, yeah, they're down, but like, people dissipate over the holiday, like, winter, it was only like four of us.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, yo, so can we actually do that, Adam, like, even if, like, I was so lost in the internet, probably.
Yeah, I'm going through everything again, I mean, like, so, you know, Joshua was with me during the Christmas break, we went through linear algebra from the beginning again for a while. It's just that now I wanna type it, so I'm gonna probably do it again, I won't do every question. Um, I I am actually planning on, um, doing, like, I want, I I wanna be like. You know, I I have like my math YouTube channel, so I wanna like have more videos and stuff like that, so.
Aww.
I'm, I'm planning on doing every, uh, suggested practice problem from the course, so that when like future students watch. They have someone who like, did, like, they can watch me do every single suggested practice problem.
In the making, I I am proud of that already.
So that's.
I'll be a part of it, I'll be that. The commentator guy.
Yes.
You're like, this, I tell you, math name, you know, to guess that, like, it can just be your name, you know what I mean?
Well, I like it, I I like it just being my name, I'm happy, that's like, it's just me, it's just like, you know.
I feel like it's, it's good.
I like it because it has, uh, I have, uh.
This is the integral sign.
It has the integral sign, exactly, right?
Because like, together, which is like, you're integrating everyone's ideas.
Right, exactly.
No, Adam, like, what do you spend the six dollars you make off of your YouTube channel on?
I have not made six dollars.
You have to make like three thousand, um, subscribers, and like, give your attention of like a thousand dollars before you can get more. Okay, so since you're on YouTube, can you look, have you heard of Zach Star?
Yeah.
Okay, you want to, bro, that guy, like, that guy's good too, if you wanna watch math.
Yeah, yeah, he posted a video recently, approximations for engineers, something like that, and it was very interesting.
Can you make a list of who is like, good YouTube? One over, I was like, one over three, one over two plus, like, half.
Yeah.
One plus something over three, and it, and A squared, I'm like, wow.
Yeah, it's very impressive, yeah, that, I I heard a little bit of Newton's method before, but after watching that video, I just like fully understood Newton's method, I could probably do Newton's method now, just by watching that video.
So, so like, I think we should make a, a list, as I was saying, like, of the, ah, useful. Videos, like, cause like, I remember, like, first semester, I found a bunch of people who like, just confused me more.
Yeah.
So like Zach Star, and like, people who we think we're like.
Yeah, yeah, we'll put together some.
Is it, is it actually that you can actually? Is it true that you can actually study for your bachelor on the internet without paying the university?
Yes, probably, it is true.
You won't get approved, you just won't get approved, that's probably, that's where the money comes in.